I believe so.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're good. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Uh, only one item on the agenda this evening, a public hearing for the Davidson variance.
Including your package, you have a copy of the staff report related to this. I'm just gonna go through it a little bit before we have a public hearing. Um, we have an application from Derek Davidson for a side yard setback on a property at 16 Second Street Northwest. Um, there are some incongruities with the side setbacks which are related to why we're having the variance hearing tonight. Uh, the plan was submitted originally with a side setback of six foot, six inches on each side of the house. However, the, um, living plans approved were based off of incorrect measurements resulting in this building that's only four foot, two inches from each lot line. Uh, so you can have that staff report and I won't read through all of it. Um, you've got the criteria that would be related to why we grant variances and that sort of thing, um, then the process, and then the staff recommendations. Um, the current staff recommendation is to, uh, to allow for the side setback and allow for setbacks of four feet on each side yard. Based on the conditions that are laid out, the applicant shall work with the building inspector to ensure that side walls meet fire code, which includes, may include fire rated walls. Approval does not apply to any other zoning standards on the property. The applicant is advised the maximum impervious surface coverage allowed is fifty percent. Compliance may require the removal of existing or planned impervious coverage. We also state the following findings of fact, that it does meet the RC zoning district, that it is using a, the property in a way that's permitted with the zoning ordinance, that it's in harmony with the intent of the zoning ordinance, and that the, uh, single-family use is consistent with land use guidance in the comprehensive plan. Uh, so with those items in mind, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll leave it up to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, is Mr. Davidson here this evening? Did you have anything you wanted to share, sir, before we open up the public hearing? Uh, with that said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has anything they would like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please. Anything you'd like to share, sir? Oh, forgive me.
Um, I own the, the property just behind this lot, and, uh, I know a variance is good. I've asked for them before, but I guess when I look at this lot, it's such a simple lot, square lot, the property pins are there, I checked that out. I guess how, how could it get this far along and have the foundation backfill? And when you apply for a variance, how can you keep working on it? It, to me, it's like, nah, nah, I'm gonna get it done anyway. I, I guess that's my questions that I have for you. Um, you know, looking at it, when the estimator stakes it out, you know, normally there's a two-foot over dig. And with, if you're within two feet of a property line, I mean, to me, that would trigger something. And, and I guess I'm just kinda curious how it got this far along and now you're having the public hearing.
I'm afraid it's gone well into that process, sir, even before it makes its way here.
What's that?
I'm afraid, sir, it's, it's made its way well into that process before it even makes its way here. So, I mean, I was aware the project was going on because I drive past it every day on my way home, but, yeah, up until this meeting was scheduled, sir, I did not realize there was an issue. So, hopefully, we're gonna go through and try to figure out who the responsible parties are in this conversation and avoid it from happening again.
Do you have a copy that I could see of the original plot plan that was turned in?
Uh, me personally, I do not know.
I think that this is the builder here. So, what you, and the owner, when he turned that in, it met the setbacks?
The original building permit, I think that was true.
Yeah, the original plot plan and building permit listed six and a half.
So, so he had the drawing on there?
Six and a half on both sides.
Sure.
Why don't you share that with the questionnaire here?
Can I?
Yep, there you go, Ron.
So, when, once this was turned in, and the gentleman started digging the footings and pouring the footings, I, I, I guess I still don't understand what the confusion was. He turned in the plot plan that showed, and that's what you've gotta do. I'm pretty, CMS signed off on that?
Right. That's correct.
So, was it this gentleman's fault then? Had he did it too big? Or?
Well, I don't know. Fault is something I hate to assign. I mean, it seems like, now, I didn't review this. Um, when it came through our office, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, you reviewed it, you saw what was submitted, you felt that met the setback requirements, and it was when the project started that CMS actually caught the incongruity there?
Actually, it was the cement person who caught the incongruity.
Okay.
But, yeah, so, yeah. We reviewed that, the site plan, we go by what they tell us 'cause we don't go out and measure it. Even on the application, it was written on here, six and a half and six and a half, so that's what we go by.
Sure, yep.
And I believe it was the cement person who caught it that was too close when they were pouring footings.
There was an excavator in it.
The excavator.
And I was caught.
Before the footings were poured?
The footings are rammed.
Okay.
And the foundation is a panelized wood wall. They were already built, same with the house is already built. So, it's, that part, the, the thing's done, so when we go to set this house, it's gonna be a rough brick shell within seven days. So...
It comes panelized, doesn't it?
Yep, so it's a panelized construction.
Yeah.
Where the discrepancy was, it wasn't caught between the site plan and the actual physical footprint. That's where it wasn't caught. And it wasn't missed by me, it was missed by the draftsman, it was missed by CMS, and it was missed by the city on two different accounts.
Wow.
So...
That's a lot. You know, I, and, and, you know, I went up and looked at it, and it, you know, I've, uh, number of years ago in Parkwood Hills, I bought four or five lots, and I had my last lot sold to a guy that worked for Wise, and we were staking it out. My property line went right through that guy's living room window. And, uh, I mean, he, he was, he was way off, and, uh, they, they had to change it. I mean, after it was framed up, the windows weren't in it yet, and, uh, I, I guess I know as far as waterproofing and stuff in Rochester, I had a waterproofing business, I've done, I don't know, probably every year I'd seem to go back and have to redo a foundation. But, I, I just, I don't know. It, uh, let you guys decide, but probably the biggest thing that bothered me is when you apply for a variance and you keep working on it. I, I mean, wonder if you guys decide, well, I know you're gonna decide, but I wonder if you say, no. You know, now he's, he's got, you know, things graded off, the plumbing, um, he's, I'm assuming he got inspection, he's moving forward with CMS with the underground? Is that then inspected?
Have you had any more than a footing inspection, have you?
We got, uh, underground, plumbing inspection, and tomorrow we're planning on having a big area inspection. And the reason why was because everybody was on schedule already. And like I said, this stuff was built already, and money's not even paid for this stuff. In order to keep it going, we were gonna stop right where we're at right now and tell it's new. So, if something had to be changed, it didn't change, but it's gonna take a lot of time and a lot of money to do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see you go through that. It's just, no, I don't. I mean, things happen, but, um, it, it just, to me, it seems kinda gutsy to move forward when you don't know where you're standing. I mean, where the footings were poured, I mean, that'd be a lot less expensive than now, you know?
There were no footings poured. It's a precast foundation that was already manufactured and, and ready to come over and be set, so there's no footings that are poured. It's all a precast wall system that was already made after the approval of the city.
I, I guess I hadn't seen that point. So, there, the, the walls set right on top of the rock?
Yep.
Oh, they do, huh?
Kinda like a wood foundation.
Yeah, well, good drainage, good drainage.
We're trying to do everything right. I understand that this, I mean, first of all, we hit the water table at six and a half feet, let's put a lump in our, our plan. So, we had to redraw the plan.
So, you went from a basement to slab angry?
So, we countered that hurdle. And then, excavates, after we tore down the other house, laid everything out, and I was just picking up the revised plans that day, and I went down there and we're like, there's an issue here. And what I did is I called the city right away, and I came up here right away and made it known. So, it's not like I was asking for mi- permission after I already did the job. I was upfront and honest with it and trying to get out ahead of, of this issue. So, we could, you know, and that's why this is a special meeting, 'cause we missed by five days on the last meeting last month, or else we wouldn't have had it done.
But don't you think that was quite a risk on your part to move forward, not knowing what they're gonna decide? I mean, I wouldn't do it, but...
But like I said, everything's already built, so it's either I get it to there and I keep corporate Wausau homes happy with keeping their setback, or I stop and then say, okay, well, if I get it, I get it. If I don't, I don't. And then it's thousands, tens of thousands of dollars that I don't, 'cause they do this.
So, right now, it's built and it's sitting somewhere?
It's on a trailer in Wausau, Wisconsin, and I'll wait and get delivered.
You know, by the way, I think a Wausau home's a good home. I was a Wausau dealer for many years. I put up forty, fifty different houses back when labor was hard to get, and they're a good home. But, uh, one of the little stigmas I had is people still consider it as a low-pitched, kind of a modular park home or whatever, but...
And other families.
Well, yeah, yeah, they're, no, they're a good home. But, all right, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Do you have anything more you wanted to share, sir? Did you have anything more you wanted to share, sir? Gotcha. And we all have Ms. Evans' comments here in email. Uh, I'm not gonna reread them given the profanity, but as long as everybody's read through them and, and aware of her thoughts and sentiments. And if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.
If I can shed some light, I will be abstaining from the vote, 'cause I was the one who provided the plans. Um, quite often, the draftsman provides the plans and the site plan, and in this situation, because things were moving very quickly, the plans were provided and the, and the contractor drew his own site plan and submitted it, and, and ultimately, you know, it's an oversight where things didn't necessarily get caught. Um, but as I understand, the permit was, was granted, and if somebody's been granted a permit, they say get everything into production, and, you know, so, as, as Tim, you said, it's kinda hard to place fault when something is discovered. But I also feel that this property, you know, the home was already, the existing home was already closer to the property line. The, um, applicant had once come in and asked about, you know, reusing the foundation, which ultimately he figured out wasn't gonna be able to be reused, reusable. So, I feel it's a very unfortunate thing that happened, um, but ultimately, we're not building over property lines, and he will be incurring some costs to make sure that the building meets the building code being closer than, you know, the required setbacks, so, um, but, but it's also part of, you know, when, when cities of Rochester have dedicated staff to do everything, and, you know, the city of Kasten is trying to, you know, run on a shoestring staff, trying to make sure everything gets done, that, you know, yeah, I guess my biggest thing is, you know, how do we fix this problem in the future? Because, uh, the housing pressure isn't going away. You know, obviously, we know that there's a lot of costs with housing right now, and then not just, you know, prefab or whatever you wanna call it, panelized, but I mean, even the single-family, we get a lot of pressure with financing, people are, you know, is there a way we can, because I mean, I think, and as I said, I don't necessarily review these, Linda reviews these, but I mean, obviously it was a honest, you know, she's looked at the permit, it said six and a half, and it met the criteria, and so that's why it moves forward, you know. The question is, I don't, how do we fix that in the future? Because I mean, as Mr. Carlson said, we don't wanna have this problem again. You know, it's, this is an interesting lot, it's a reuse of a lot, it's an infill lot, but, uh, you know, we don't wanna create a potential problem down the road. And that's, that's why I'm looking for feedback from the planning commission on ideas you guys have to how, how do we fix that in the future? Because obviously, uh, variance midway through is not what we plan on, it's not, that's not ideal for sure, so...
What do we pay a building inspector for?
Does he review planning and zoning?
Well, should he not review the stakes and the, the layout?
I, I don't think that, it's not their job to do anything with planning and zoning. They're a building inspector, not, I mean, when you go to the city of Rochester, they have planning and zoning, and they have the building inspectors. So, I do not believe that it's our building inspector's job to make sure. I think he just caused it because when the process came through, he saw it by chance.
Can it be? Can it be something that they can do?
They do do it. Not like officially, but they do measure because they've even called us and said, you know, this house is, is twenty-five, does it, you know, is it supposed to be twenty? They do measure things.
Yeah, I can...
They don't sign off on anything, but they do, they do go out and they do, and it is, I don't think they actually tape measure it off, but they, they cite it.
I, I can verify that. They do tape measure it. They measured my garage in Hayfield from the property lines.
But is that Hayfield asking them to do that?
No, that's CMS.
Right, but CMS is hired by the city.
Yes, but CMS, that's their criteria for checking.
Okay, I'm gonna disagree with you on that.
They've checked it on, on a garage that I applied to, I think it was two years ago we built for a guy in northwest, and we did, um, a slab upgrade on that, forty slab, and they stopped us and said, I think you're too close to the rear lot line.
Yep.
Compared to your notice. And then I compared the site plan to the, where we're laid out and showed, I can't remember who it was, if it was Jay or, um, or Marlowe, but one of the guys was out there, and we, we had to, we had to stop.
Well, this is at least the second significant issue that we've had with side yard setbacks within the last, was it a year?
Yep.
That something is, needs to be fixed with the inspections, or somewhere along the line, something needs to be addressed.
Might be an interesting question to ask exactly what measurements are taken by CMS, if they've got some sort of, um, outline or process they follow, and maybe reviewing the, I don't know if that falls within the purview of the planning and zoning board. I don't, could be a stretch to think that it does, but why don't we?
Yeah, I can certainly check with them and see exactly what their, what their criteria are for the, for the lot measurements, and, uh, you know, part of the issue is that, uh, there's a responsibility factor when you go out and measure. And I think that's part of the reason the city typically doesn't get involved in that, because any kind of measurement we're taking, we're not surveyors, and we're not gonna necessarily have a precise, uh, number. You know, if I go out there and say, oh, that looks like your lot line, and, and I'm gonna measure five feet off, and I'm off, and I just said, that's, that's your lot line, and they're gonna go by that. And I think that's one thing that I'm sure, you know, I guess CMS is good because it's a contracted service, and if they screw up, it's on their insurance, but I'm sure that's, that's where the hesitancy's gonna be.
But even CMS, you know, they're not a survey company. Um, if you were really gonna do it by the book, you'd have to have a survey company, company come out and check the pins, because people do dig up pins, people move pins, uh, if they're in the utility easement, they get moved by utilities. I mean, there's a lot of variables. It's, it's hard for them to be held a hundred percent real, you know, to the gun just because of pin movement.
Well, I mean, typically, I think if somebody would come in and say, I have questions about my lot lines, I would say, you need to get a survey.
Yes.
We print off, we can print off an overhead from the GIS from the county and say, this is what the county GIS looks like, you know, maybe gives them an eyeball chance if they're trying to find a pin with a mel detector or something like that.
Yep.
That's, that's our response, because in the long run, it's really on them. So, you know, I can definitely check with CMS, and they will about, you know, trying to look at this in the future. You know, some of these are common sense, like setbacks in the front, you know, okay, that doesn't look like twenty feet, you know, obviously. Um, and we can't catch all of them, but we can certainly improve, and that's our goal.
Right.
I know that. Linda's goal and my goal as staff is to try and make sure that we have as few of these problems as possible, so...
And when people talk with fences, you know, it's like, you can put them right on the property line, but you better know where it is.
Right, right.
And they ask, will you come out and, and it's no, nope. You can, you'd have to get a survey if you wanna do that.
I almost wonder if it's gonna end up being a homeowner beware type of thing. You're fine until somebody tells you there's a problem.
Yeah.
And it, it goes back to your liability point, sir. Why would anybody wanna take on that liability and go down that path? But I say that out of a point of ignorance. I guess I'd like to understand what's, what the process is and start conversations from there.
Sure. No, I can definitely, I can definitely check with CMS, and I'll try and get, uh, I'll try and get a report back to them as soon as possible. If possible, I'll have it in the packet for the next planning and zoning meeting. If not, we'll have it in, uh, in July's meeting.
Even without the survey, uh, you've got a general idea as to where the property line are, and you can measure, and you may be off six inches or so, but when we're off four feet or two feet, uh, there's no excuse for that.
Right.
In, in my mind.
I agree, I agree. One question I wanted to ask, and for one thing, Ronnie, I agree with you that it is dangerous to proceed when you know there is an issue. And we, the planning and zoning committee needs to be more careful, or the city needs to be more careful when allowing people to continue. I, I understand what you're saying and why you're saying it, and I agree with it. Um, but I, I understand that you needed to keep going because the plumbing was hanging there. If it would've caved in, you'd have all kinds of issues compounding everything. So, I understand that, too. Um, I wanna ask you a question. Um, Jessica Evans sent us an email with her views. Did you talk to Hannah Tunneyhill? Any at all? Did anybody get any response?
That's the west, her, the east neighbor, I believe.
East, the neighbor.
I talked to the gal on, yeah, the east side, yeah. And I just asked her if she was gonna be at the meeting. And her, I didn't talk to her husband or anything, and she was, you know, well, I don't even know what, uh, what a variance is.
Yep.
And I told her, I explained to her that, hey, I'm encroaching over on the setback a little bit, and you can see that, and I'm planning on just, you know, landscaping that whole side, and she was like, no, it's fine. So...
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
Maybe she didn't get the letter at that time, or realized what we were talking about, but, I mean, I thought it was clear all along. I mean, I was standing right there at the fence on my side of the fence, and she was on her side. With the lady on the west side, I don't, I don't even know who that is.
Yeah, she sent us an email. She's, she's fine with it.
Public information, so you know.
And that's Jessica, her name is?
Yes.
I've seen her maybe a dozen times in two years, like, on that property, so not very often.
I know the only issue I see is if somebody would sell their property, you come to look at a piece of property to buy, and the neighbor is arm's length away from your house, that makes an, an issue as far as I'm concerned. But this is far better than that burned-out hulk that's been sitting there for how long? I, I'm glad somebody's building in this lot. Um, I don't, it, it's a tough call, but I do agree with you, Ronnie. I understand. I, it's just something we gotta be careful with as a city, letting people proceed when we know there's an issue. Just my two cents.
So, we just got done talking about surveys. What do, does anybody have, uh, an idea? We, and I don't, we'd have to be really cautious with something like that because it's expensive
Oh, yeah.
to have them come out there.
You know, there's companies in Rochester that will come out and lay it out, laser lay it out, and, and then they come back and check the footings. They laser in the footings, and they'd be good people to, I mean, they're right there with the equipment.
Yeah, I mean, survey costs seven fifty to a thousand.
Right, and that...
I know WHKS does them, but, you know, it's at the bottom of their pile, and it's gonna be on their timeline. But, yeah, there are companies that do it, so...
Just the last time I had to have them come out and survey one, one side was five hundred bucks, you know, and so that's where...
Aaron, I don't wanna get in the middle of it, but what do you charge? I mean...
I have, I have a company that does layouts. We don't do surveys.
A layout, yeah.
But we lay out where the property, as long as there's property pins and going from there. And it would probably be like two hundred and fifty hours. You know, the, the oversight on here is actually looking at the plans themselves, and somebody looking at the, the floor plan and looking at the site plan and making sure the two match up. And ultimately, I'd be happy to, you know, review that with somebody because it's a fairly simple thing that you could look and say, oh, these don't match, there's an issue, 'cause ninety percent of the time, they're going to match. Or, I mean, it should be a hundred percent of the time, and then kinda going from there. So, um, I, I, you know, truly feel it's a, it's a unfortunate mistake, but...
It was on the back of the packet, too, but that's okay.
Why didn't you see that?
I'll just make one additional comment. The, in regarding to, um, the note from the staff report under the staff recommendation number two, the impervious surface, we've had discussion on what, what the heck that means, and I don't think we've ever come to a, a clear definition as to what that means. So, if we, let's say the patio, or even the driveway for that matter, was a brick layout, is that considered impervious?
Yes.
Or is it, is it?
Impervious, yes. I think we did kinda flesh that out last year.
Did we?
When we had that in our zoning update.
We talked about crushed rock at that time.
I feel like we did talk about that, and, uh, I have to go back and look at it exactly, exactly how it reads, but I know that that brick would be.
It got brought up when the storage building was talking about.
Yeah, it was going in last year, yeah.
Yep. I gotta comment on something with, if you're gonna do brick, there are, there is such a thing as, uh, pervious pavers.
Well, there's pervious pavers, too, right, right. That'd be a, I, I don't think that's what you were asking about, though. Right? You were talking about brick, like regular brick.
You can have, you can have pervious asphalt. I mean, there are, there are products out there, they're not readily used around here.
Sure, you've got a lot of other drains that you should run into, 'cause you'd have to have stormwater removal then, or a catch basin or something kind of connection, but...
Yeah.
And, and there also is concrete now, too, pervious concrete. Crazy. There is, Tess wrote up, and there's one in Minnesota.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah, so, Tim, if you can resurrect what we did about that.
Sure, I can take, make a note on that.
'Cause I, I don't recall that we ever, other than crushed rock, we ever came to a clear definition as to what that meant.
I don't think so.
Hi, Colin.
Any other comments or questions or thoughts or ideas? You know, if not, there are six questions to ask every time that a variance comes up, and those six questions are in your packet. If there's any value in me reading these things out loud and debating them, I'm happy to do so. Um, I guess I personally have read through them. I've got my own answers to them. I don't have any heartburn in terms of, of endorsing a variance to address this particular issue, but I would definitely entertain thoughts or ideas that, to the contrary.
And I apologize for being late, but, uh, so the placement on the, on the building, or the placements of the building on the site, um, it, it may have already discussed this, but its proximity to lot lines in terms of fire ratings for the exterior walls, is that discussed? Okay. That was the only point I wanted to bring up.
Still needs to meet the, he still needs to meet the building code.
Yeah. That was the only point I wanted to add. Thank you.
Well, if there are no more discussions or thoughts or comments, I would look for a motion, please.
I'll move to approve the variance request.
You have a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have two abstains. If you'd be kind enough to note those. With that said, sir, you have your variance.
Well, we'll make a recommendation to see Cal.
Of course, forgive me, forgive me.
Of course, forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, forgive me. You have the approval of the Planning and Zoning Board.
We'll go to City Council Wednesday, this Wednesday night, Tuesday.
So the things I have to follow up on would be CMS's policies on reviewing lot lines, what capacity they would be willing to fulfill with that, or which capacity they do fulfill, following up on impervious pavement, and then side yard setback, checks on that related to how the measurements are taken, that sort of thing. Those are the three items that I have out of that. As I said, CMS, hopefully I can get something from them by our next meeting, and then hopefully I will also have an update on the impervious pavement. That shouldn't, whether we've resolved it or not, I should be able to get you information on whether we've resolved it or not, so.
Wonderful. If there's nothing else, all are during the meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do you have the, the permit packet right there?
I believe she does, yeah.